Thank you. I'm back, I'm back. Hello. Obviously, everybody had -- hello. Excuse me, there's -- the only person allowed to talk in here right now is me. Thank you. We're moving on to the next phase of our rehearing, which is purely to the floor. Because of the hour and whatnot, and the fact that we all get tired and whatnot, I'd like to limit ourselves to two minutes. How many people again want to talk? Raise your hands.
One, two, three.
Well, I'm assuming they will, so.
I think it counted about thirteen.
That's all right, okay.
We're waiting for the board.
Yeah, right. Three minutes apiece. Right, and we don't want any repeats. If you're going to say the same thing, just say "I agree" or "I disagree," whatever. I disagree like the other person disagrees. Okay, you keep raising your hand.
You have a list.
You want to do it alphabetical or by row?
Let's go by the list.
Okay.
Yeah, start right here and then.
Right, we'll start right here. You're going to ask everything, sure.
Um, I made a prepared statement. My name is Jeff DePerris. My property is probably about six hundred feet south of the mine.
You sent us something in the mail.
Yeah, I've sent some emails, so hopefully you'll have a chance to see them. I wasn't sure if you'd sent them.
If I look at a map, could you tell me before you start which one of these people you are?
Um, I'm the one right up in the picture.
Ah, okay.
It'd be this house right down here?
Yep. But it's only six hundred feet from the south entrance that they came to.
Yeah. There's your, uh.
I have a, I have a, move it. Go ahead. I'll try not to interrupt, but you're good.
Which side is where?
Oh, yeah, oh, we, uh, we know where I was there. Um, I just built my house here about five years ago. This would greatly affect my family and the value of my home. Um, I attended the first meeting back in the spring and spoke out against it then. There's no record that I was at the meeting or anything I said, even though my driveway is less than six hundred feet south of the south entrance. I don't recall or detail the conversation at the meeting, but when I spoke and said who I was, commentary made to the effect that my driveway was a long way from the entrance and over the town line, and no one really paid attention to me. Um, being unprepared, I was unaware of the south entrance, and I didn't know, even know how far my driveway was from the entrance, so what can I say at that point? Um, my owners were here all prepared with a lawyer before I even got to, before I even really knew what was going on and it was approved the same night, so I didn't really get a lot of contact. Um, as if that wasn't bad enough, all of a sudden, the traffic pattern was changed and the conveniently all the trucks are now leaving south for victory.
Yes, sir.
A mile of two-way trucks accelerating and decelerating over a blind pit over past my house. I was at a previous meeting on the variance in the only traffic. Um, this may seem like a minor detail to the mine owner, but for me, there's a big difference. Just new plant doubles the trucks going past my driveway. There will be two-way traffic trying to pass into my house on this narrow road. My kids will be getting picked up and dropped off by the bus that's already truck passing and waiting to get into the mine. It should be obvious that it will be a mess and have substantial impact on our safety and quality of life.
Two entrances for.
There's a danger still before my driveway for trucks heading south out of the mine, regardless of which entrance it is. You would think that to get a variance that allows the mine owner to use the south entrance, which is just over half a thousand-foot distance required, there should at least be a clear line of sight to my driveway. The north entrance is still only eight hundred feet from my driveway, and that obviously doesn't have a line of sight either. It should be hard to get this type of variance when so many people's safety and property values are involved. If a variance like this was ever granted, I would think it would be done under ideal circumstances with the cooperation of all involved. My house is over the town line in victory, and even the county passed a resolution against it. The DOT and DEC seem to be concerned with the state roads and overall environmental issues with non-residents on this road. That's what the zoning law should be for. Even if the law was changed from one thousand feet to two hundred feet, with hundreds of trucks on this narrow road, there will still be two-folks on the road. If a variance is given for this, I don't see how the same criteria used to come to that community couldn't let the mine owners do anything they want. They already almost changed the traffic pattern without a public meeting. They were denied a thousand-foot variance for mining activity near structures for now, but it's still on the map of the DEC then. What's to say that after they start mining and get busy, not mining 24 hours a day or on weekends will become a hardship and they'll just need that? It was already top of the spring meeting, the mining Saturday. I got home and looked at the zoning law and paragraph J2OP says Saturday operations will be limited to residential deliveries only. I don't think they did much residential work with those large trucks, but that was just skipped right over. Both of my children have had problems with allergies, follow their lives, and take medication for it now. Dust and dust from the trucks will most likely aggravate them. They'll probably have to stay inside where all the trucks are running and will keep having windows closed. Another point I'd like to make, just to make it clear, is that this is a brand-new, large-scale, industrial operation with a new owner and trucks every few minutes. Nothing like this is being done or has never been done out near this land before. Any comparison to old operations or existing operations is just trying to confuse the issue. This needs to be treated like the new, large operation it is. If this operation's like an existing operation, why was the road paved in anticipation of the project, the stated new DEC public response comments? As for hardship to the mine owner, to say it was self-inflicted is an understatement. He bought the land solely for this mine, knowing that it didn't meet any of the zoning requirements. I brought this same point up at the last meeting we were in. You can see just by looking at the tax match that the property has limited road frontage and a lot of residents here. There are multiple properties with the required setbacks for mining operations and entrance and exit. And nothing was discussed with anyone before the property was purchased to see his name and be obtained. I argue that he is causing undue hardship to residents like me who were here first and had to go down this path. I couldn't do anything to avoid this situation. I built my house before any of this came up following all zoning requirements. I knew it was an agriculture zoning area, but I have no problem with normal farming or small commercial operations that they are doing a lot. It is not zoned for large industrial use. Looking at the zoning laws at the time, I would have thought it was protected against someone doing this due to the proximity of all the driveways and residences. Try selling a nice house like mine across this reef trucking, that would be a lot of money. I've heard comments that the thousand-foot setback to existing structures is just for dead damage to them, and that the thousand-foot distance to driveways is only for noise, but when you look at all the zoning laws together with the very large setbacks, it seems more likely to mean that the intent was to prevent this kind of activity around residents for multiple obvious reasons. Giving variances on setbacks defeats the purpose of the code. Just because there are no provisions in the zoning law for a special use, just because there are provisions in the zoning law for a special use permit doesn't guarantee there's land in the town that meets all the requirements in the suit. Essentially, they bought a property that doesn't meet the code, then used the argument that they needed variances because the code is too restrictive and no other properties in the area would meet the code here. That argument makes no sense. I guess using that logic, as long as there's no place else to mine, it's mine anyway. The code was put there for a reason. I'm not asking for any special treatment or considerations. All I ask is that the existing zoning laws are upheld. If the mine met the setback requirements, I wouldn't be. Also, due to the fact that this variance was almost changed by the mine on a without meeting at all, an additional variance has been requested since the spring meeting, and the county passed a resolution after the first meeting, I ask that all this new information be used to reconsider the variance granted in the spring for this review. Just to summarize real quick, um, I went over the area variance criteria that you had from the last meeting, and my comments on that. One, whether undesirable change will be produced in the neighborhood. I think it should be obvious that running a dusty, dusty eighteen-wheelers through an area every five minutes will create an undesirable change. There has never been anyone near that much traffic in the city at any time in the past, not even cars. Whether benefit can be achieved by another method. You could have bought a property that conformed with the code. This is not anything existing and is trying to expand. Whether the variance is substantial, if this isn't substantial, I don't know what we're doing. The scale of this should be obvious. And adverse effect or impact on physical or environmental conditions. There are many questions out there that haven't been answered on this. Dust or al, dust for allergies and hot water are two. Whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, as I stated before, it's obvious it was when the property was purchased without due diligence for this purpose. Um, and just to make this, you know, I have some pictures celebrating the ones that some of the board and things I've taken out.
They were in your emails.
What's that?
They were on your email.
They're in the email, so I'll get copies if you want to.
Any questions?
No.
All right.
Write this letter on the email.
I agree.
What?
There's one down.
Wait, wait, let's go on sequence here. Good lady, yes ma'am.
Um, as Mr. DePerris, or as already said, we've worked together on a video presentation, which we did send to you, so you've got some still shots, you have a video presentation of blind spots on our road and some possible safety scenarios. Um, and I also just have a quick statement that I just sent to you that I would like to read. Um, my name is Robin Allinger. I live at 13177 Sanford Road, which is directly across the road from the proposed Markville Mine, including the existing entrance of the old mine, which is the entrance Mr. Folito plans to revert to if the current variance is overturned, and the proposed entry exit for the new site at the gated driveway just south of the old one. My driveway and the old mine entrance are at the bottom of a siteless knoll, and any vehicles from these sites are already in grave danger from small and large vehicle traffic traveling from the north along Sanford Road at either forty-five miles, which is possibly the new proposed speed limit, but it is currently fifty-five miles an hour. The addition of up to one hundred heavy-duty trucks per day at the site would congest the roadway and increase such dangers at least one hundredfold. Even with the recent rebuilding of Sanford Road, it still only measures twenty and a half feet across, and I understand that the DOT standards want twenty-two feet at least for this type of traffic. It is also not wide enough to accommodate head-to-head passing of two heavy-duty vehicles or even one large and one small vehicle. The shoulders along both sides of the roads are soft and narrow, and much of the road has deep drop-offs beyond the shoulders. Should a vehicle be forced over too far, it could easily become overturned and injuries sustained. We have several school bus runs, morning and afternoon, in both directions on Sanford Road and the adjoining Purple Road to Route 38, which is part of the mining access group. Since school buses pull toward the center of the roadway when stopping to pick up and drop off children, this leaves no room for oncoming or passing vehicles and forces them to also stop by New York State law. If you can imagine what might happen if a school bus is coming over either of the two blind knolls, which one is right by me and one, the other one is right near Mr. DePerris, the second being toward the south end of the road where he lives, and suddenly meets a heavy-duty mining vehicle unable to stop quickly enough to avoid a collision, think of the endangerment of children, drivers, and occupants of any other vehicles entering the area at the same time, and all traveling forty-five miles per hour or more. We residents, residents of Sanford Road do not like to envision any such event, but the possibilities become endless and very real should this variance be granted and the proposed mine traffic come to bear. On April 27th, which is the first, uh, meeting that I attended, earlier that day, Mr. Christopher Folito and Mr. Rodney Green visited my home, unannounced and introduced themselves. Mr. Folito noted his purchase of the acreage across the road and of the acreage alongside my property.
Ma'am.
Including the existing mine.
Ma'am.
And a home.
We're running, you're running over, ma'am.
I'm running over.
But time.
Time.
Three minutes.
It's, we're now under what?
Yeah.
I, I, if you want a Xerox it, we can read it.
Why not?
You know, I mean, but we won't necessarily read.
We, we have that. Robin, you sent.
I've read that.
Yeah, that's true. No, I, actually, we have seen it if it was attached to videos, I know. I, I don't mean to cut you short, but, and if we have time and somebody wants to give up some of their time, we can come back.
People across the street are living directly, if I could give you a little more time, I can have a thing.
Let's get through. That's waiting worthiness versus, you know, that's a judgment I can't do. Everybody gets a chance. We'll come back if we can. Ma'am, do you have something you would like to say?
Who's next in line here?
Anybody else?
We have the second row back.
Which, we're done with the first row?
Third row back.
Wait, second row? Let's wait, wait, they're shy. Maybe they went to sleep.
No.
I guess I'm going to give up my time so she can finish her claims, and I just want to say that I agree with the first gentleman. I have a plenty of property near that, and I have parents who build a house there, and I have never built a new house there now, but I'm just getting some from somebody who's working on a house here. So please, if you have the rest of mine, two handed.
You can continue reading. You know, isn't democracy, wasn't it?
Um, after he noted his purchase of this acreage, um, he outlined briefly his proposed mining operation to be run by his company. He said nothing about any other drivers coming in, and he described the operation as "faulty, busy, but small." He told me that he had five to six large trucks in his company, and that he planned to run his operation Monday through Friday, nine to five p.m., only sometimes running on a Saturday. He and Mr. Green both offered me their personal phone number so that I might come to them later with any questions or concerns before or after the mine was up and running. Since there has been intermittent small activity in that mine for years, I was not surprised by this proposal, and although not pleased about it, was at least willing to be reasonable. However, I learned quite a different story that evening at the first ZDA meeting at the top Sterling Town Hall, where Mr. Folito and his lawyer had already proposed a variance request for setback requirements for access roads and existing residences, as current Sterling Town Land Use rules prohibited such mining activity within a thousand feet of any structure. My home is the one that is registered as one hundred and seventy-five feet away. I learned that several self-contracting companies, one of which I later learned is Roselli's, would also be allowed access to the mine, that operation hours would be Monday through Saturday, seven a.m. to five p.m., that up to ten, ten-wheel tractor-trailers would be entering and exiting per hour, and that dust control would be accomplished by utilizing what I was told then, fifteen hundred to two thousand gallons of water daily. The DEC comments have saying much more, um, one hundred thousand or more gallons daily from the existing mine well. This could affect wells. Uh, I asked several questions pertaining to these new ideas, but still felt ill-informed and unprepared for the abrupt granting of the proposed variance request that night. It seemed to all be done behind my back, and we, and I feel that I was tricked by the institution that is supposed to protect the rights and lands of tax-paying residents of Sterling, specifically those residents in direct danger from this mine. Um, at each subsequent meeting, I have found out more and more details that are leading towards a worsening scenario for occupants and travelers of Sanford Road. Um, I and several other concerned residents have continually spoken against this proposal on the basic standards of, and detriment to, public safety and welfare, health risks, air quality pollution from dust and vehicle fumes, drastic negative effects to the character of our neighborhood, dangerous traffic congestion on our road, and the very possible devaluation of our properties, all of which has to be considered under the Sterling Town Land Use rules. In addition, my husband and I both have chronic debilitating, life-threatening health conditions, all of which would be negatively affected by those above-listed aspects of an industrial mine. Thank you.
Okay, who, who else would like to say, make comments, ask questions, whatever? We're in, we're still in the third row. Okay, yes ma'am.
Kristina Gasset, Porta 485, Golden. I have been in my brother's house for forty years ago, and we reside about a quarter of a mile from down hill from the Grand D mine. We're very close, I would say maybe a little less than a quarter mile. We have lived with the Grand D mine, um, operations many years. I've read the letter to the board, and I'd like you to read it. For literally years, we residents have voiced our protests along with evidence in the DEC and the town of Grand D of the never-ending daily dust invading our yards, homes, and our lungs. This continual onslaught of dust on the lungs of those residents who live near the mine and who have chronic lung diseases is especially outrageous. In August 2014, the residents were finally promised by the DEC that a wheel wash would be installed on the mining property to effectively control the dust. Installation was required by January 5th this year. Excuse after excuse ensued. No wheel wash is being used even today, and the dust is still raging. Um, I've read, please see attached photos, taken of three dust-laden trucks emerging from the mine within a range of six-minute period of time on September 22nd, two days ago. This is the tiny ones of what we have heard with, and worse, every weekday for years. Absolutely no meaningful enforcement action by the DEC to control this dust continues to this day. There were three major traffic stops in Roxfields, gravel-homed trucks onto roads within our town of Grand D in the space of five months this year. Five weeks ago, I contacted the DEC and protested the most recent Roxfield, which was August 19th, on our town grid eighty-five, as well as the continuing onslaught of dust. Crystal City from the DUC, DEC responded to me a week later that he would be working on, and he contacted me soon with details. That was over four weeks ago, and since then, I have not heard a word from him or anyone else from the DEC. Please, on our behalf, for permit enforcement, have even come directly from our town supervisor to the DEC director to know avail. This pattern has been repeated over the years. The pattern is non-compliance of Syracuse standard and gravel to the permit regulations, and total lack of meaningful enforcement by the DEC even when faced with country governance Under the water table, mining became, I'm almost finished. Under the water table, mining became DEC permitted in 2012. Residents were assured that dispersion of mining would never impact their dug wells. Over 2013 and 14, upon changing our in-house watercopter, we noticed a light break progressing to check flag even when changed after only two weeks in place. We're now faced with lugging water for our drinking and household use. Sediment sludge is superb, breeding ground for bacteria and bacteria are fighting cow form in our water. It will take longer-term, expensive, intensive cleaning operations to try to restore health to our well until the next onslaught of sediment and sludge occurs. The Grand D cements states it must be proven, they use the word substantiated, that mining operations for the cause of mining well loss are thoroughly climbing before the homeowner is provided a clean water supply and a new clean water source by and sourced by the miner. Do not be lured into false security by that permit promise. Proving a mine's negative impact on any resident well is, for all practical purposes, impossible. Even concerning the well that has been completely healthy for thirty-eight years straight and is best known after, originating, not originating on the mining property. Our town of Grand D gave up the option to limit Grand D mine activities and protect its residents. For the health and safety of your people, please don't make the same mistake with the proposed Markville mine. We have to give this letter.
All right.
Thank you.
Sure, we, we just love to get paper. Lisa loves. Could I ask just one question as a clarification? Do you have a dug well or a drilled well?
I have a dug well. I'll listen.
Next, anybody else in the third row? Anybody with a hat on when it comes?
I'd like to say, is there any of you people live by this mine? It's going to be quite, I'm James, of course, I live by town grid eighty-five, Grand D mine. Are your lives going to be affected by this? And if not, I feel sorry for the people that do live there because their lives are going to be ruined. I've lived by this one for fifteen years now. It's no better now than it was fifteen years ago. They talk about using the water truck to control dust. The water truck waters the roads, and then it alters the mud. They track the mud into the road, then the cars come down the road fifty mile an hour, and you can't even see the road from my house, with the dust flying up. The whole thing is no good, I'm telling you. If you don't believe me, come over to my house, and I'll show you. They got Roselli in there, Mr. Folito, and I think there's fifteen other trucking companies in there. We get about one truck a minute for ten hours a day, and they're limited to twenty-eight. And as far as the DEC, they will not enforce any rules or regulations, believe me. We've been fighting with them for years. That's about all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? We're, we're here, this is, this is your turn, Dave.
Hi. My name is Jimmy John, I live on Purple Road in Town Victory.
I'm sorry, I'm slightly hard of hearing or very, if you, if you, you can come up this way and talk, it's, you're loud.
I live on Purple Road in Town Victory. I'm obviously here because I am opposed to, not necessarily the mining operation, everybody has, uh, the right to make a living if they do it according to the rules, um, but there's obviously some concerns that some of these people have that people should, should take into consideration. Um, one of the things that strikes me is how did the traffic from this mine get diverted into the Town Victory? It's your mine, you're the ones that are going to get the tax dollars from it, and you're stuck in the Town Victory, and you don't hear nothing.
You should know the benefits.
Sure, but they don't.
They're not a tax property.
Oh, no. Same right to you.
Wait a minute, let's, wait, wait, wait. Address, excuse me, address the board, you can't, you can't really interrupt.
It's your mine, and you're diverting the traffic from it through the Town Victory on, on roads that probably shouldn't have that kind of traffic. I don't understand why it's just not going north to 104. It needs to access a state highway anyway. There it is. Bring it to 104. I don't understand that, I must have missed something along the way, but that seems like the natural way it ought to go. I understand that intersection of 104 is a bit of an angle, but it certainly didn't take much to make it a ninety-degree turn. And even, I don't have much else to say, I can't agree with all these people, and you guys obviously don't live anywhere near the affected area or, you know, speeding along the long time.
I like the cynicism. Yeah. Anyone else? Wait, wait, I, let's hear the young lady back there.
Um, my name is Dela Jessusam. I live at the corner of Sanford Road and Iris Station Road in Town Victory. Um, I have some slightly different concerns. I did provide you with a copy of some documentation, uh, where, uh, this has been studied before this issue of the economic impact within an area when a gravel mine goes in. Uh, this paperwork, uh, is, uh, contains information that's nationally recognized, um, it's methods of deriving these numbers, um, the people that have commented in these are nationally known and, um, certainly experts in their area, and they show that the economic impact in an area where such a crap of mining operation goes in. First of all, um, people's property values decline. The closer you are to the mine, the more the decline. However, people up to five miles away, within a five-mile radius, um, will see their property values decline, such as that when they try to sell their homes to get out of the neighborhood, they find they have to take much less money, if they can get any at all, to get out, away from such an operation. And it shows that the losses in the area from such a mining operation are far outweigh any benefits economically and, um, in other, in other ways. Um, as I previously stated, that there's going to be people that are going to get jobs there, so this could be a good thing for the neighborhood, but they've proven that that doesn't actually happen. Uh, any job increases, new jobs that are formed are very small. Uh, instead, you have the same people from other mining operations coming over here today to work. All you do is displace them from one place to another, and they don't create any new jobs. Instead, they, uh, de-veil you, the neighborhood, uh, they certainly don't improve it in any way. My other concern, and, and because I live actually about, within a one-mile radius of the mine, I can expect to see about fifty percent decrease in my property value. Now, my property I purchased, um, eight years ago, um, never knowing that such an operation as this might come into play later on, and I know most of the people that live in the area purchased their property sometime, but never know that such an operation as this would come into the neighborhood. And, uh, it worked. I worked, saved money, bought my property. Um, I still work on my property, that's what I do, that I'm farming there, uh, and it just doesn't seem morally correct that we should all suffer this economic loss, even to the point of losing, uh, losing value in our property, uh, for one person to make a living. It's, it's too much to ask that all of us kick in ten, twenty, thirty thousand dollars worth of our property value for this one person to make, make, uh, make a living. Uh, the second, the second problem that I have with this thing is that, although there are. The second problem that I have with this thing is that although they're stating that they're going to take this travel route down into Victory and turn onto Sanford Road, or turn onto Fulpel Road, and then go directly to Route 38, I already know from living in the area that that doesn't happen. The trucks will take the shortest route they can find to get to where they're going. I have multiple trucks that jump off of 104 and 38 and come across Iron Station Road. My farms on both sides of the road, so they're running right through there while we're trying to operate farm equipment, move cows across the road, things like that. The traffic burden is already pretty heavy through there with heavy trucks, and they take that short line. They don't stay on the same routes. And although we hear in one rep that we're gonna stick to the route, this down Sanford Road and right turn to Fulpel to access 38 and 104, in the next rep, we're reminded that Mr. Felido pays road taxes, and he can drive up any road he wants. So, that tells me he's gonna drive up any road he wants, and so are his truck drivers. The third problem that I have with it is that for me, operating over there, then my miles, the car flies just about, and the noise carries right over. I work outside all day long, and I enjoyed a peaceful neighborhood up until this thing is gonna be broken. I did hear operating last year, and it was, I'm gonna tell you the same thing I said to Gorg, it's a calamitous bracket that drones on all day long. It just goes on and on and on. And it forced me to the point where I was running before to drive around and find out what that noise was that was going on. When it ended, it seemed like, eh, it's done, okay. And I went on for a week, maybe two, and it's done. But now it's gonna be droning on six days a week, potentially, ten hours a day. And I'd also like to remind you that ten trucks an hour is actually twenty trucks an hour going back and forth from front to back, because they're coming and they're going. They're coming and they're going. Twenty trucks an hour every three minutes, heavily loaded, large trucks. That's all I can say, except that I agree with everyone else here so far tonight also.
Thank you. Thank you. Right. Anyone else? Yes ma'am?
I agree with everything Jess said. And basically, I live right next to this road that he wants to use his trucks going in and out of, not very far away from it. I hope I'm left, or left. And I'd like to invite you down to see where these houses are, how far the driveways are, come down and look at the property.
You've got that beautiful white car in your driveway, with the graphics on the side.
With the planes, yes.
Yeah, it was beautiful, I saw it.
And I'd like to say, I've lived in this area my whole life. My whole life I've lived in this area. And I mean, I've known Steve since we were children, I've grown up with Steve. And I love Steve, and I love his family, but I have worked my whole life, I have worked hard. We built this house down there, we've paid our taxes just early for years. We built our house down there for peace and quiet, that's ours entire home. And come down and see how close all this is, you know, what peace and quiet are we gonna have? How are we gonna, we can't just, you know, what are we gonna do, just sell and move? You know? It's gonna ruin our peace and quiet.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Steve Keeling, I own a tractor trailer, and I went down Sanford Road two weeks ago to see if it was narrow and dangerous as they were talking, and I met a school bus, and there's plenty of room on our road for two large vehicles to pass. Yeah, there is plenty. I went to the school district, to the bus garage, to ask if they ever had trouble with a mine in Butler, that's probably two miles from 370, that thirty, forty, fifty trucks a day travel. Buses have been interacting with these trucks for fifteen years, no issues whatsoever. So, trucks and buses can work together. One other thing, back in the seventies, R G E was gonna build a power plant here, and all the people come out and said how bad it was gonna be, so R G E left, took all those good jobs away, and we live right next to three of them, four of them, and nothing's ever happened. So, I think we can mine and have neighbors without any big problems.
Okay. Right. Anyone else?
I don't understand what I'm trying to say, unfortunately does not meet American Association State Highway Transcription. It wasn't recognized by the state and the federal government. That has to be...
Excuse me, can you identify yourself, please?
Larry from Annova.
Everybody named Larry is good.
Larry's my... Does not meet that specification, and must be twenty-two feet, eleven feet each side of trucks. That is recognized by the state and the federal. And you can find it on the internet, if you can't find it, I'll tie it up. I have a report. Plus, I'm concerned with the fact, as I've been on that road a couple times, looking at the situation, because of all of this lady, I haven't heard about that twenty-three, that they're, that they're on the old mine, that's a symbol, site, this is a safety factor. It's possibly a kind of situation of American, out of transportation, if they make these things up. And assuming the people that own, and the people that live by my road, the safety that is a critical entity there, they're also guarding a lot of people who commute out of the road, who are going either to 104, to Fulpel, and around the Iron Station, or anything. You should look into this one part of the start, as the highway itself, the road itself is naturally too narrow. And, those shoulders, there's a drop-off, I'm saying approximately six inches in my D-lash. That's one of the causes anybody goes off, going moving towards the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. One more? Yes ma'am?
First of all, I'm similar, I agree with everything this time, but several people have shared with me some of the stuff that they've shared with the board, and the report that Mr. Felido referred to was gotten from the FOIL, and I believe that it was Robert Algen, who provided it to me.
Could you identify yourself, please?
I'm sorry, I'm Jennifer Sherron, I'm in Markville. So, just like, you can have that report, I mean, in this case, Harrison Road has, it's not the same kind of road completely, but has site-related issues, you know, with Harrison Road. Similar standards would apply. I wanted to sort of tick through a lot of this text. With respect to the prejudice, as far as I know, no access road has begun construction in here, so I don't understand why it would be a concern, prejudice, if something hasn't begun. With respect to the D E C's role, the D E C does not set the location of entrances and exits. It only talks about environmental impact, so it basically says, if this is very logical evidence, this is what we have to test the noise for. So, basically, if Mr. Felido was directed to D E C and had looked at the evidence, all they do is look at the noise. You're in charge of the entrances and exits. And the report, Ms. Steele said that Mr. Plasse and she work together, and I now understand that, because Mr. Plasse pointed out, all kinds of things, except the section in the responsibility of D E C where they say that they do not in any way impede upon the jurisdiction of town to regulate all of these matters with respect to the exits, the entrances, the access roads. And I'd remind everyone, with respect to the access road, you do not have an access road drawn on that map. And then we are told that the entire life of mine, all four phases, is what is intended to be used as the access road, that you would need to calculate the thousand feet from the entire life of the mine. So, perhaps as you can later imagine, buys an access road, four to ten, you know, kickoff points in all of the thousand feet. With respect to the noise, the D E C actually ran a separate set of tests, which were devised by Mr. Felido's, Jolish and consults, where he spread things out and away from the entrance, because the D E C would do a right near for entrance, the worst-case scenario, and the worst-case scenario only has one item truck. And I think it's heard from other people here, that if you're gonna have a truck leaving every three to ten minutes, then probably there's more than one truck being filled at the same time. Again, I would want to stress that a rehearing means that at the moment, there is no first appearance, it's being reworked. All of these things are being brought to attention, it's all part of the new record that you're looking at. Towns may consider the environment as impacted zone regulations, they're using the D E C's information, so it's not, you know, it's not something we worry about with respect to what he says, it's about mining, and mining alone. Everything else in terms of zoning regulations is yours. The last thing would be that the variance is forever, the life of mine will be forever, and I would ask you to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Okay, is that it?
Could you speak once more, please?
It just did.
Remember, someone should tell you it's a very dangerous situation. When most trucks come out of that gravel, but sometimes they get large rocks, wrecked to the dual wheels, they'll come out, start down the road, the truck will start jumping up and down, the rocks fly out. I've had eight to ten-pound rocks fly into my yard. Could you imagine a car coming the other direction, fifty mile an hour, getting hit with you all one of them?
Did I see pictures?
Somebody would be dead.
Did I see pictures of rocks in your yard?
Yes, you did.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
There's a lady behind you who has not talked yet.
Hi, my name is Lynn Lyons, I live at County 85, in the town of Ramby also, and I'm invited to the Ramby Mine. I just wanted to let you know that we have gone through everything we're supposed to, to the checks and balances with the mine. We have met with the D E C officials, we have met with Mr. Reselli himself, we have met with his lawyers, we've met with the state lawyers, and everyone has told us that they will, that our best interest is what they're looking out for. As Mrs. Bassett told you, we make numerous phone calls on a daily basis to the D E C to help us with everything that's going on there, to know about. I have recently sent an email to Mr. Felido asking him about how the mine up in Ramby has gotten so large without going through the proper procedures, and his answer to me was, he wasn't involved at the time. So, I'm just letting you all know that if you're gonna allow this to happen, just be mindful that you need to be in charge.
Thank you. We like being reminded of what we're supposed to do. However, I do have to say, a lot of the things that you said are not within the jurisdiction at this point.
Absolutely.
A lot of what you say needs to be said to the planning board, of which there's at least one member left here, maybe two. We don't do roads in general, we don't do traffic in general, we don't do property values, there's a whole litany of things we don't do. What we do do is consider the particular parents, or at least the rehearing of the one, which has to do with residences being within a thousand feet of their mining entrance or the access road. And that's what we need to consider, in terms of all its aspects, that is, the impact on the individuals of the neighborhood, area, and so forth, that's what we'll do. So, what I'd like to do, without any further comment, that's something we really wanted to put to the things that we have to deal with, which is not a lot of what some of you are talking about. I understand what your concerns are, however, we're not the body to do that. What I'd like to do is close this portion of the meeting, so that we can have a discussion, so that we can see if we can figure out what a unanimous thing that we need to do is, or do something else. Maybe we need more data, maybe we need the table, maybe we need to vote, maybe we need to vote on whatever, but we need to get on with this, because it's nine thirty. I would love to solve this tonight if we can. I'm sure we can.
You know, people like me and Ralph on this driveway are right there, you know, automotives are obvious, destroy our property, they would say. But, you know, people like Steve Keeling and whoever else, they don't live there, they're not within this area. If anybody, if he lived in my house, you know, he'd be there arguing the same one night. But keep in mind, the residents are within five, six hundred feet of this driveway, two-way trucks.
I understand. I, we, maybe empathize, maybe that's too strong a word. Okay, one more. Okay.
It was an accident today on my way home from work, across from the after-producers place I own, a small car with the ditches over there, that car was completely into the ditch, and he put a blanket on it and reached the rest on the side, and then there had to be a lot of people coming out of that apple, you know, tried to. And so, that kind of danger exists, and I'm not sure how deep the ditches are in there when that happens.
I understand, but we're the wrong agency, and I don't know what to do with that, you know?
I don't know.
Well, okay, I'll tell my wife. This is the last comment, you know, because we, you've all had a chance.
Okay, I just wanted to say that the D E C ordinances that you're working remain into effect from June 2014. The preceding ordinance says for five hundred feet, and the new ordinance is at one thousand feet. So, it's pretty clear that the law process that vetted this felt that five hundred feet was too little, and that it needed to be extended to one thousand feet, and I think that's something to keep in mind, the history of the law, how it is set, and what it actually says to you about any compromises you're considering.
My obligation is to deal with the law as it is.
Correct.
Not what it was being, not what it used to be, I can't do you that. Thank you. All right. What I'd like to do is take a vote on closing the disportionment thing, so we can get on to...
I move to close the disportionment. Second, that.
Right.